May we roll call to order the July 24th meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority. May we have a roll call for the City Council?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Menuchyan.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
And for the Housing Authority, roll call please.
Authority members Friedman.
Here.
Menuchyan.
Here.
Mincy.
Here.
Prozian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Najarian.
Here. May we have your report?
The Jennifer, July 24th, 2012 joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, July 19, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Before he is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding 2011-12 Homeless Solutions Project formerly known as Winter Shelter Program, year-end report and direction to support Essencia's application to the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, LASSA, for the 2012-13 Winter Shelter Program. One A is council motion accepting the 2011-12 Homeless Solution Project year-end report and directing staff to support Essencia's application to LASSA for the 2012-13 Winter Shelter Program.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. Mr. Duran will give you the year-end report for our experience this past year on the Homeless Solutions Project, but we do want to spend some time with the folks from Essencia who are here with us this afternoon to talk about support for their application on a going-forward basis, at least for the coming fiscal year.
Thank you, Scott. Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council, Chairman Najarian, members of the Housing Authority. Every year at this time for the last several years, we provide a report to the City Council and the Housing Authority regarding the year-end wrap-up of the just-concluded Winter Shelter Program and the status of the upcoming Winter Shelter Program. As you know, for 12 of the last 14 years, a homeless shelter program administered and funded by the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, known as LASSA, under the jurisdiction of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, has been hosted at the Glendale National Guard Armory, and these are regional high-tolerance hypothermia prevention winter shelter programs, typically with a 150-bed capacity. Since the city operates a continuum of care and a local effective network of homeless service providers, including being able to provide outreach and case management, we're able to assist and coordinate in the management of the Winter Shelter Program and the delivery of services to those that are willing and able to avail themselves of those services. You may recall in September of 2010, the council authorized staff to try something different than the traditional 150-bed regional program and to work toward the development of a pilot local winter shelter program to be implemented in 2011 that would target Glendale and Burbank homeless, be operated by a local service provider, would be smaller at 50 beds, and would not be funded by LASSA and not be part of LASSA's regional winter shelter system. To that end, the city did identify a project sponsor, which was Urban Initiatives, a local homeless service provider. We did secure funding through the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, the amount of $50,000; through the City of Burbank General Revenue Funds, in the amount of $50,000; through the City of Glendale General Revenue Funds, in the amount of $51,000; and we obtained LASSA and the county supervisors' cooperation for us to use the Glendale Armory for our local program instead of using the Armory for the regional 150-bed program. The budget for the operation of that local winter shelter program was $151,000. In addition to these funds, we did have $70,000 worth of Economic Recovery Act emergency short-term transitional housing vouchers, in addition to some shelter-plus-care permanent supportive housing vouchers, to be able to provide housing placements for persons that went through our local winter shelter program. Unfortunately, this year, we do not have funds available to continue to consider to operate our own local winter shelter program, nor do we have the vouchers that we had last year. The pilot winter shelter program, which we called the Homeless Solutions Project, operated from December 15th through March 15th. The project provided intensive case management with the goal of housing chronically homeless individuals and families to help break the cycle of homelessness. We did have some success. The project served a total of 90 unduplicated persons, of which 70 were adults and 20 were children. Of the 90 persons that went through our local winter shelter, 37 persons, or 41 percent, were assisted with permanent or temporary housing and did not return to the streets when the program was over. The successful implementation and completion of the local winter shelter program also caught the attention of LASSA and the County of Los Angeles and is now a model program that they've inserted in their annual RFP process. LASSA did issue their request for proposal for service providers for winter shelter programs for the 12-13 year. As you know, the state mandates that armories be made available to winter shelters, and LASSA and the county have jurisdiction to identify which armories are needed and made available for winter shelter program without any formal involvement from the cities or communities in which the armories are located. In response to LASSA's RFP, which was issued in May, and after careful consideration and much community input, Essencia made a decision to submit a proposal to LASSA to operate an 80-bed shelter consisting of 60 beds in the Glendale Armory and 20 beds at a commercial site in Burbank. At this time, I'm sorry, at this time, Essencia's proposal does not require funding assistance from the City of Glendale, and as mentioned earlier, the city is not planning to continue to operate a local program. It was a one-year pilot due to the availability of funds, so we are very fortunate that we have Essencia willing to operate a program, and a program that's much smaller than the traditional 150-bed shelter. Staff believes that Essencia's proposal is a much better alternative than LASSA exercising its discretion to contract with an outside service provider, an organization that we would not be familiar with, and to go ahead and operate the 150-bed shelter that they are accustomed to operating at the Glendale Armory. Essencia's involvement with the winter shelter program will also ensure that daytime services are coordinated with our local network of service providers, including Essencia's own access center, case management, and supportive services. It is important to note that there are, you know, there is an impact to the central area. Whenever we have a winter shelter program, there is an increase in service calls for our fire department and our police department, but over the years, we've accepted that we do form a winter shelter management oversight committee, and we meet every two weeks to try to address those issues, and we do the best job that we can to address those issues and to try to be as proactive as possible. And we're confident that Essencia would be very much a team player in managing and monitoring the effectiveness of the program and any management or negative impacts of the winter shelter program. As part of this report, we're also providing the City Council with an update on the Glendale homeless count, which HUD requires us to conduct as part of our homeless needs assessment in order to be eligible to receive the federal continuum of care funding. You do have, as Exhibit 2, the full report, but I will just give you some highlights. The point-in-time count was conducted in January, as HUD requires. Based on the homeless count on any given night in the City of Glendale, there are 299 homeless persons. This compares with 412 that were conducted in, I'm sorry, that were counted in 2011. The reason for the 113 fewer homeless persons was due to the absence of the regional winter shelter program at the Armory. The most important statistic that HUD looks at is the number of chronically homeless, because this is HUD's number-one priority in addressing the national homeless problem. And according to this year's count, there are 107, or 36 percent of the homeless population that is chronically homeless compared to 25 percent in 2011. So the proportion of chronically homeless went up slightly. Other highlights include 56, or 19 percent, were identified as chronically mentally ill compared to 23 percent in 2011. 129 are individuals compared, I'm sorry, 129 or 43 percent are individuals compared to 67 percent that were individuals last year. 134 or 45 percent are persons and families compared to 28 percent last year. 79 or 26 percent are children under 17 compared to 16 percent last year. So a higher proportion of families that are homeless in our community. Also 14, we counted 14, or 5 percent, that were veterans compared to 9 percent that were veterans last year. Related to that, we'd like to note that Essencia was able to place 22 veterans into housing through the VASH program during the last year, and the city was able to place an additional four veterans into our shelter-plus-care program. So we are prioritizing housing for veterans, and we feel that that attributes partly to the lower number of veterans this year than we had last year as well. The homeless count findings will be incorporated into our application to HUD for our 2012 Continuum of Care funding. In terms of the upcoming winter shelter program, I would like to introduce Natalie Profant Camuro, the Executive Director of Essencia, to discuss the application that they have submitted to LASSA. And again, we are recommending a motion to approve Essencia's proposal to LASSA and to let LASSA know that we are in full support of that proposal, as it's a better alternative than, again, LASSA exercising its discretion to put in a different service provider and run a 150-bed shelter. Unless there's any questions for me right now, I can go ahead and call up Natalie from Essencia.
Any questions from Mr. Duran? Okay, I don't hear any.
Thank you, Jess. Good afternoon, Mayor Quintero, and Committee Chair Najarian and Council members, and Mr. Ochoa. Yes, Essencia did evaluate whether we would apply for the winter shelter program. In years past, we've always played a supporting role. We've operated the street outreach team in support of a 150-bed program that historically was operated by IMAGO. We also continued to support last year's program, which was significantly scaled down to 50 beds, and saw how we could help support that project with the intake that we did at the access center and the case management services we provide at the access center. Knowing that LASSA does like to maximize the use of the Armory, we decided that we would not try to stretch to that, because it was beyond the capacity of our organization, and I think it was also beyond what I think this community really needs to support. Just did mention you have 107 people that were identified on the streets, but I think that 60 beds in the Armory is going to be sufficient for the needs of this community. We also looked at how to better serve Burbank, because historically Burbank folks have been transported over to Glendale, and that's been also a dicey proposition. Many people who are homeless in Burbank don't want to come over here. And so we had a meeting here in Glendale to talk to the people locally about what level of support there would be for this kind of program. And then we also had a similar meeting in Burbank, and the Burbank community stepped up with a building in the City of Burbank. So we were able to submit a proposal, which would put 20 beds in the City of Burbank, and that alleviates also pressure on Glendale for serving people who are homeless outside the region. So our hope is that this proposal will be looked upon favorably by LASSA, even though it's not to their volume, if you will, for this program. But we leverage substantially the access center services that we have that are amply supported through the HUD funding that Glendale gets. We provide mental health services and case management's targeted to employment and substance abuse and recovery services. So we would love to have support of the City of Glendale for this, and it would be, I think, important for LASSA to know that the City of Glendale is engaged and supportive of this effort to address the people who are homeless on the streets of Glendale, and also that you know that your partners in Burbank are really doing their part to step up as well. They're facilitating a conditional use permit for us to use the new building, and I'll be out there next week again with some more meetings with that community. So I don't know if there's anything more specifically about the program that you would like to ask, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments?
I have some questions.
I got a little confused, understanding everything that's going on.
Okay.
In terms of what Essencia wanted and what LASSA was asking for in the RFP. So maybe if you're, if you can answer that.
Sure.
We're going to have 50 beds in Glendale.
60.
60. 20 in Burbank.
And 20 in Burbank.
Instead of the 150 that typically LASSA requires and can come in and just place wherever they want to without any community input.
Well, one thing to keep in mind is LASSA has less money this year. So in fact, the all 12 application pass threshold, they're in the quality review process right now, they have about a half a million dollar more in requests than they have for funding. So in reality, they're going to have to cut some beds. They're either going to cut a total operator or a couple of operators, or they're going to have to cut some beds from the system as a whole. So I think we're actually well-positioned by not having the full 150 beds, having it scaled appropriately with the level of staffing that I think is cost-effective.
And this only is open during the temperature of?
No, no, it's continuous. Now, it is fewer days, so we're looking at starting December 1st and then ending the last day of February, or ending on March 1st.
This isn't the thing that kicks in when there's?
The weather activation.
32 degrees or anything like that?
No. LASSA stopped doing that many years ago. Pasadena still does a weather-activated program, but LASSA has always been, well, not always, but in more recent years, has done a continuous operation, and historically, it has either started December 1st, and I believe you may have done it December 15th this last year. And it is, it is a little problematic, because historically, it pours like mad on March 16th, but they don't have enough funding to go that late in the season. So it would be continuous operation. For this program, people would not be done, we wouldn't do the intake at the Armory site, so that is an important detail to understand. Usually, people would just drop into the Armory, and that's where they would have the intake process done. We're going to have the intake process done at our access center, and the primary case management services will be done at the access center, which is on Fernando Court. And then people will show up for their bed and their meals for the evening hours, and we will work to move as many people as possible off-site to our access center or to productive activities in the community, so they're not loitering.
Which should be in contrast, if LASSA does it, then they basically will run it. Even if it's not 150, it's still 100, 110 beds, and done in a way that really we have no input into.
And we're familiar with the good neighbor policy, of course, and we would be implementing that.
And these are open to families, any individual?
Oh, another point, yeah. This actually, LASSA is going to be handling families differently. So this is strictly for single adults. And we would do, really, in Glendale, historically, in the winter, we haven't had many families coming in for winter shelter, and we are able to process them to our main facility on Fernando Court. So the priority would be for families, they may have some temporary shelter in a motel, and then be moved to our emergency housing program as soon as beds became available.
Okay. And so the services will be attempted to be given at the Fernando Court location. Armory would be just for evening?
And there would be constructive activities in the Armory. I just don't like being completely dependent to have the case management done in the evening hours, because you can't make appointments in the evening hours. You need the daytime to do those sorts of activities. So that, the plan would be more group activities, trainings, workshops, that sort of thing in the evening hours.
Mr. Menuchyan.
Yeah, I wanted to kind of clarify this. Keep throwing out there, saying that if we don't do this, LASSA will come in and do it themselves. But there are no facilities here to come in to do it themselves, and, did we have this program last year?
You had a different operator in the Armory. It was the Urban Institute.
In Glendale?
It was in Glendale at the Armory.
I remember a couple of years, we did not have the homeless shelter here in Glendale. When was that?
About five, four, four years ago. It was in Burbank.
It was in Burbank.
At the Armory.
Right.
Right.
So what, I want to be clear as to the probability, if this doesn't happen, that LASSA actually can come or would come to Glendale specifically and initiate a program like this. Is that really a possibility?
I think it is.
Or just keep throwing it out there as a red herring?
No, and certainly not a red herring from the standpoint that we want to provide this continuum of care for folks. If there are people that need it.
And I support that, and I will support this, but continuously saying that if we don't do it, then someone else will come and do it for us, is really, you know, over the top in my opinion.
Well, might I just say that they might not do it at all? I mean, if, because nobody else applied to run this program, and so we were the only applicant for Glendale as well. So the other danger would be that, you know, they may say there's somebody who can do it more, on a more cost-effective basis, that would come in and do it, but the other scenario would be that they decide they don't have the funding to do it here.
So that spectrum runs from not having any program, yet we know from the homeless count that we have 300 folks that are homeless that need service, all the way through to LASSA doing whatever LASSA, as a partner that, you know, we've worked well with them, but still, they would do it really without our input.
And can, can LASSA actually impose their will here in Glendale?
Well, because the Armory is, they have the mandate, the state mandate, to use the armories as locations for this. So there is a venue that is tailor-made for them to use that facility for this purpose. So if it's going that direction, and there's at least a chance that they would come and use that, from staff's perspective, we're saying, let's try to make the most out of it and actually put the best, most well-managed program possible into that location.
Do all the cities have a program, a homeless program? I know for a number of years, Burbank didn't have one, and we-
A lot of cities do not, sir.
-pick up the slack for, for the homeless in Burbank.
I think what you see is cities of a certain size that are somewhat self-contained, like Glendale, to a degree like Burbank, will have, will end up having a program, sometimes in collaboration with a nonprofit, sometimes funded entirely from themselves, as we experimented with last time, last year. And so it really kind of runs the gamut, but it's more a function of the size of the community and the need within the community.
How many beds does the Pasadena homeless shelter have? Or are they applying, or how many beds did they have last year?
Well, they typically do an op, I'm not as familiar with the Pasadena program. They typically operate a separate program. In this sys-
Pasadena's separate?
Well, in the homeless delivery system, there's what's called a continuum of care system.
I'm aware of that.
Pasadena has their own separate continuum of care, as does Glendale.
Which is a year-round program?
It's a whole system of programs, most of which operate year-round. And then what they have in Pasadena is a weather-activated program. So my understanding is Pasadena's winter program is locally funded. They don't go to LASSA for that funding, and so that's why it operates differently.
Will the city fund it?
The city, and then they did a campaign with local businesses to support.
All right. So has Pasadena had the program for a number of years?
They've had their own program.
Does Mardi Gras have a homeless program?
They did not. They had, as the city, no. I'm getting better at saying "they." They did have a nonprofit that would do emergency vouchers, but there was not a shelter in place.
In the San Gabriel Valley, it's a rotation among churches.
Yeah, and I can tell you that in a smaller town, it gets extremely controversial, because a lot of times, those churches are located smack dab in residential neighborhoods, and folks, as much as ironically enough, where they want to do the good humanitarian thing, just don't do it in my neighborhood.
And let me be clear, I support the program. I just don't feel that we should do this, because if we don't, LASSA is going to do it.
And I apologize for that.
I think we should do it, because it's a valuable program for the community, and that we should be able to actually get help to as many, as many homeless individuals as possible.
And truly, we're not looking to overbake the LASSA's going to do it, use it as a boogeyman out there.
Right, right.
It's more a function of, we can either have nothing, or we can have something, and if it's something, it isn't going to have anything that reflects what this community would like to see.
My hope is that this is what you see as a fit for the community. We proposed it in that spirit, and so I do, notwithstanding the alternative scenarios, hope that this stands on its own merits. Thank you.
Okay, I have one. Speaker, Nick Lamb.
Mayor Quintero, Chairman Najarian, member of the City Council, and a member of the Housing Authority. My name is Nick Lamb. I'm the board chair for Essencia. I appear in front of you today to ask for your support for our proposal to LASSA, and we are the main service, homeless service provider in town, and we kind of feel obligated that we should take on this challenge. I want to just point out a few things regarding this proposal. First of all, it does not cause the city anything. We are asking LASSA to pick up the tab, and we don't know would they be able to 100% cover all the costs, but we are trying to ask them to do that. There might be a gap, and then we probably have to go to Burbank or maybe some local business community to try to bridge the gap. The second thing I want to talk about is that we did have a, with a smaller size service like 80-bed, 60-bed, we can more tailor to the local homeless folks. 150, you're going to attract a lot of people from Los Angeles County. We are Glendale. We want to serve Glendale residents, Glendale people. I think this tailored to us better. And the other item I want to point out is that with a smaller size of a bed composition, we actually had a good success rate of bringing people out of homelessness. As you listen to Jess Duran, 41 percent of last year's occupant in our winter shelter program were able to either get permanent or temporary housing, and that is the goal. We don't want people to keep going there, no improvement. We want to help them to get out of homelessness. That is the whole existence of Essencia and should be the goal for City of Glendale. So I just want to ask you for your full support. Your full support would make us look stronger, because the city is P.I. us, so we can have the full strength, the full ammunition to go to LASSA and ask them, hey, look, we are the, we are qualified to do it. We are organization, we're backing up from the City Council. We are grassroots. We have a lot of folks in our organization want to do it the right way, and we ask you to give us a chance to do it, and we ask you to pay for it. So that is our intent, so we hope we can get the support. And on a separate note, I just want to report to the City Council and the Housing Authority that our new building for Essencia is moving along pretty good. If you recall, we have the $4 million private, the $2 million private donation matched by the city. We used the money, have a fee to buy a piece of land with a building. We rent, we are renovating it to become a permanent headquarters. We are about halfway done, and it's moving along great. The other half of the money, we bought a now-yun apartment, and we are in process of trying to do a renovation. I think the proposal is before you guys sometime, probably last month or so, and once the agreement is signed by the, I think legal is reviewing it right now, taking a look at it right now. So we are moving ahead on both fronts, and we are trying our best to serve our community. So thank you for the opportunity, and we hope we can get the support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any comments from the Council and Housing Authority? Okay, any comments from the Council and Housing Authority? Mr. Friedman?
I support this proposal. I think it's a good fit for Glendale. It may service less people, but I think they have a higher quality of service, more targeted service. I think that your success last year showed that. I do hope the funding comes through. It's very important. I hope we're not left trying to scramble to find the funding. I particularly want to thank Essencia and Nick Lamb and all the volunteers who work so hard there. I know it's a labor of love for the board, members of the boards of directors, and they really do a great job of running this important amenity year in and year out, as does Natalie and her staff. Thanks for coming today. Mr. Lamb.
Well, I agree. I think we all support the concept, and Essencia's been doing a great job. Under a previous name, they've been doing a great job. I think it is about quality in terms of trying to, homeless people obviously have issues and problems. Sometimes it's the economy, but you have to have a road out of your homelessness, and I think this particular agency and this project will certainly continue to bring, you know, that type of energy and that type of knowledge to work with this population. So if we have a motion?
They're all moved.
In a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Menucha.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintaro.
Yes. Do we need one for the Housing Authority?
No.
I do have a quick question. What was the percentage of the homeless beds again? Mr. Duran, I didn't get a chance to write it down.
From nine to somewhere higher.
14 to nine?
Mayor Quintaro, members of the Housing Authority, City Council, the veterans is 5% for 2012 count. That's 14 veterans in Glendale, compared to 39 veterans in 2011, 9%.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn for the Council?
They're moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.
For the?
For the Authority?
Move it.
Second.
Authority's adjourned.